That's the best thing I should have used.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order today being October 23rd, 2018. The meeting today is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris, and is being broadcast live on PBD Access Telecommunications. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to start off the meeting. If everybody could please stand for a moment of silence? Great, thank you. And now I'm gonna turn it over to our Superintendent Kara Mertag for the introduction of two of our standout students. I'm gonna turn it over to you, Ms. Mertag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight I'd like to introduce two students from the Center School. Addison Russell is a fifth grader at Center. She's the daughter of Laurie and Ben Russell. Addison has two older brothers, Declan and Gavin, who attend PBD High School. Her older sister Ashlyn is an eighth grader at Higgins Middle School. She also has a younger brother, Brayden, who is a third grader at Center School. Addison's favorite subject in school is math. Addison also participates at Center School chorus, lacrosse, cheerleading, and soccer. Holy moly, you're busy. She looks forward to having her own Chromebook next year in sixth grade at Higgins. Addison serves on Center School's School Council, and she's one of the six leadership captains. Come on and join the mayor. Our next student is Jake Powers. He's also a fifth grader at Center School. He is the son of Cindy and Justin Powers. And his grandparents are here today? So, welcome. His brother Justin's a freshman at PBD High School. Jake's favorite subject in school is also math. Jake also serves on the Center School's Student Council as one of the six leadership captains. Outside of school, Jake plays baseball and basketball. He likes to play football as well, just for fun. Jake looks forward to meeting his new friends at the Higgins next year. Welcome, Jake.
One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always forget to put on my hat. What did I use? Thank you so much for being here tonight. I also have the pleasure of introducing Mrs. Orfanos, who is principal at the Center School. Tonight she's going to speak about PBD gives, and Center School is representing the month of October. So, please join us, Mrs. Orfanos.
Yep, right there.
Thank you very much. So, Center School, for the month of October, has adopted a very special cause that is near and dear to our heart. We are going to be celebrating Purple Day on Friday, in honor of the mission of the Colton Buckley Foundation. We're lucky enough to have Lisa Buckley with us tonight to speak on her foundation. And our focus will be substance abuse awareness, and helping the Colton Buckley Foundation with a effort to help build a children's literacy library for the Citizens Inn. So, on Friday, we're going to ask everyone in the city of PBD, and our elementary school students and staff to wear purple, and that is the color of overdose awareness. And we want to just wear that in unity. And we've already started collecting a number of books at Center School, and we're hoping to have a major donation to the Citizens Inn Literacy Library as a result of our efforts on Friday. And then next week, our six leadership captains will work with our guidance counselor, Mrs. Lawless, and I, to go around and collect all the books. So, we're really looking forward to see the results of the donation, and knowing how giving PBD is, I know already what a success it will be.
Great.
Thank you, Mrs. Orfanos.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any questions for Mrs. Orfanos on the work that's going on at Center School? Thank you for everything that you do for the school and for the city. Thank you, Mrs. Orfanos.
Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Since Lisa Buckley is here, could we take her out of order from our agenda and make a motion to?
Absolutely. Let's go right to Lisa. Lisa, come on up, please. And I think everybody knows Lisa, her and her husband Todd, a side of foundation in the memory of their son, Colton, and they've really made a difference spreading awareness. So, Lisa, it's great to have you here, and we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to thank the Center School faculty and the community for your ongoing support with the Colton Buckley 5K. We truly believe bringing substance abuse awareness to our community and children, that is the most important prevention, and to offer families guidance and support available in times of need. Thank you, Jackie, for the wonderful ideas in asking families, children, to donate books to the Citizens Inn Children Enrichment Program, and for to have the kids wearing purple to represent awareness for the opioid addiction. We can't thank you enough. It's so sweet. Colton's Race and Walk will be on November 11th at 9:30 at the AOH. It took a lot for Todd to actually finally put "walk," but he did. So, we're celebrating the fifth year, and giving back to all that has supported us. We're doing a free pasta party, November 10th, from 3 to 7, at the AOH. We'll have Kathy Day from Learn to Cope, who will be on hand providing education material and outlets for those seeking help. This year, we'll also have Narcan training available, thanks to our City Council and Ann Manning. It will be an opportunity to sign up for the race, as well as pre-registered to pick up the numbers. So, if you'd like to pre-register, you can do that at www.norshourtiming.com, or www.coltonbuckley5k.com. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yeah, why don't we go to that? If there is no objections, we'd like to go to the superintendent's report, the first item, the Higgins Hawk Shop. And Ms. Mertag, do you want to make any introductions?
Sure. Tonight, I'm very lucky to have a lot of the Higgins staff here tonight. And Ms. Michelle Fine is going to start. She's our new associate principal here, and she'll introduce the staff. But I'm going to have them explain what Hawk Shop is. So, please join us.
One another. You can grab a couple more chairs.
Amanda will start to speak. I'll actually probably have them. I'll have them each introduce themselves and say what they do. We have a little bit of a mix here, so.
Will you use the microphone, please? Thanks.
You can take that out.
Again, I'm Michelle Fine, Associate Principal. Tanya Magliozzi, seventh grade English teacher.
Rachel Kotler, math teacher.
Kelsey Cowdell, seventh grade science.
Becky Dean, eighth grade science.
And Amanda Vega-Chancholo, I teach seventh grade social studies.
Amanda will start and just give a little bit of what brought us here, and then I'll talk very briefly about some of what we have in mind. Do you want to say?
Well, thank you for all meeting with us tonight. The seventh grade Panthers Cluster noticed an incredible financial need amongst our students in 2016 for basic necessities. We were saddened, but also wanted to help, and were often perplexed on just how to give our students the right assistance. For many years, teachers, staff, guidance, and administration had given students supplies, clothing, and toiletries, when we directly know a student is in need. And most of it is done under the radar, on a case-by-case basis, and the kindness is never forgotten by the recipients. Imagine if you went to work this week, or came to this meeting, without having brushed your teeth, washed your hair, had no soap to use, deodorant to put on, or clothes that looked or smelled clean. Many of our students come to school, and sometimes, not at all, because this is their constant circumstance. A little girl wrote on a getting-to-know-you paper that a Dolphins teacher was her favorite, because she bought her a coat the previous year, when she had never had one before. One boy approached us and said that he could not come on a field trip that we were attending. When his homeroom teacher told him he was all set, we took care of the payment, and he could attend the field trip, the boy stated, "You do not understand. I cannot go on the field trip, because I will not have lunch tomorrow. And I cannot bring one, because we have no food at home." He later mentioned that the only food he ever had at his house were the leftover rolls from his mother's waitressing job. We went home and cried that night, and made him a lunch for the next day. On a hunch that there were so many other students like these students, who were lacking basic necessities, most of us take for granted, we decided to create a free cluster table in the classroom, where we placed hats and gloves to keep the students warm in the impending cold. We explained that they could take anything off the table, no questions asked, and we even let them know when the room would be empty, if they would feel more comfortable taking items then. That first day, $20 worth of dollar store hats and gloves were all taken. The need was so great, and it was not just one or two students taking all of the supplies. The next day, we brought in more, and included sample sizes of whatever we had at home, of toothpaste, shampoo, deodorant, soap, and warm socks. As time went on, teachers throughout the building sent us items for our table, and gave us some of their children's old clothes that were clean and like new. Time after time, the goods were taken. We would come back after class and see that some of the items were very strategically needed, like a shampoo and a brush, a bottle of toothpaste and a toothbrush, a stick of deodorant, and a clean shirt. The following year, in 2017, a student of ours had dirty, small, and old pants. A staff member cleverly said to him that she had a nephew, and he was about the same size, and he couldn't use some clothes that she had bought him, and asked the student if he would like them. The boy was very thankful, and proudly wore every piece he was given by that staff member. At the end of the year, we received a letter from an anonymous student, saying, "Thank you so much for caring about me, and letting me come to school feeling clean and confident." There were many tears that year amongst our cluster. We wanted to help these students, and all of our Higgins students, who sit in front of us every day, to feel the same: clean, confident, warm, and attending school. But we just didn't have a school-wide platform, a room, or a closet where we could do this. We decided to turn our wishing for a platform into action, and have proposed to take our idea to a school-wide level, where any student who needs essentials, or some clean clothes, can find some directly and discreetly within school, in a store-like setting. Our cluster teamed up with Associate Principal Michelle Fine, and Milestones Teacher Joanne DeMild, who couldn't be here tonight, who had a similar vision, which we have morphed into one, to create what we now fondly call "The Hawk Shop." And Michelle can speak to the details a little.
Now that Amanda got to your hearts a little bit there. A lot of the basics are in the trifle that you have, so I'll keep it very brief. We were also inspired by a lot of the programs that have happened locally, like Mr. Hockman's No Child Goes Hungry program. Also, Katie's Closet, which is in over 50 schools in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. Similar program, it's a nonprofit organization that goes into schools to run a program. The schools who utilize Katie's Closet have seen improvements in attendance, achievement overall, on some level, but certainly in attendance. Also, Salem High School has a clothing and food pantry. And we would like to tie in, which is where Joanne DeMild has come in and been very helpful, some pre-vocational training opportunities for some very skill-based instructional opportunities out in the community and here at school, with some of our students who have those things built into their educational programs, but also for some of our other students who would benefit from those. And we were really looking at some of the Northshore ARC pre-employment training programs, that I know you all know, there are some happening right here in PBD right now, and those have been very necessary. So, things like community access skills, daily living skills, social interaction skills would all be built in, and it would give some of the students in our programs who are getting these skills a more focused way to do that. I think at this point, we've also had some Higgins programs, like our Holiday Giving Tree, that have served a lot of our students, and we'd really just like to see it be done in a more organized way that can meet the needs of more of our students, and over a greater amount of time than what we can do during just the holiday season.
Great. Well, thank you both for your words, and thank you all for being here and taking on this challenge. It's very powerful, definitely tug at the heartstrings. And, you know, sometimes, you know, we all get caught up in our day-to-day lives, and you see things that a lot of us don't. And I think that's a very important message, to make sure people know what is going on in our school system, and the help that our kids need. So, thank you for taking that on. Any questions, or any thoughts, comments? This is terrific.
Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that was really good. Thank you. Okay. We'll go to approval of minutes. We have one regular school committee meeting minutes for October 9th, 2018. Motion to...
Motion to accept and approve regular school committee meeting minutes of October 9th, 2018.
Second?
Further motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Mrs. Dunn, you have a comment?
Yes. On that motion, I'd like to just make a correction. This would be to page... Oh, in page eight, it's the last page of the minutes. The motion to go into executive session, just wanted to include, the reason was, it was a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters, without the intention to return to regular session.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for bringing that to our attention. We have the motion in front of us with that addition proposed by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. Next item, approval of bills. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3978, dated October 23rd, 2018, in the amount of $988,277.36, subject to audit.
Second? Thank you for the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant A, number 3978, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3979, dated October 23rd, 2018, in the amount of $2,777,213.50, subject to audit.
Second? Further motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant B, number 3979, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. We'll go to continued business. First item is the MSBA Higgins Project. Mrs. Dunn, anything new to report?
Just a couple of items, Mr. Chairman. We held our regular October meeting last week, Thursday, October 18th. The members present heard updates on our last change order. The project is definitely coming to an end. The materials are being prepared for the closeout. We also discussed the need, as always, for our landscape maintenance project. We had a couple of interesting discussions about the new traffic pattern, and how it seems to be working much better for the Higgins School. And our next meeting will be Thursday, November 15th, here at Higgins, at 4:00, and that, of course, is open to the public.
Great. Thank you very much, Mrs. Dunn. Okay, we will go to the next item. Under continued business is the PBD Public Schools' school start-time surveys. We have some results, and open that up for discussion or comment. Mrs. Carpenter?
So, we got the results of all of the surveys. You all have them in your packet. I guess, moving forward, we need to decide as a board if this is something that we feel has created enough interest, that we should pursue it, or not pursue it. If you don't have it, I do have extra copies for anyone that does need them.
I certainly think we should continue this discussion, certainly. I have, quite frankly, have not had the opportunity to completely review the paperwork. There was certainly lengthy, different categories of... People filled out the survey. I'm wondering if this, we could potentially keep this for the next meeting, or subcommittee, whatever the board would think appropriate. But I think we certainly need to have a little bit more time to review, and have a real discussion on this. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I absolutely agree. There's a lot of information that came through these surveys. I'd like to thank Ms. Macarelli and Ms. Brothers for spearheading and coordinating the surveys being distributed, and receiving the results, and providing us with copies of those results. But I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I think we need a little more time. I don't know whether it's appropriate to put it in Ms. Carpenter's subcommittee, or to keep it here in the general school committee. But maybe the... If it were to go into subcommittee, perhaps they could meet prior to our first November meeting, or if not, have it on our first November meeting's agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. And Mrs. Carpenter?
I don't want it to go into subcommittee. I'd prefer we put it on the next agenda, when everyone's had a chance to thoroughly review. The subcommittee is, you know, kind of small at this point, so I'd really rather discuss it with my colleagues in a full committee.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank everybody involved with getting the surveys out, and thank all the people who responded to it. It really is amazing to read the percentages, and also the comments that were included. I think it's a good idea to keep this with the full committee, because there are so many facets of our just day-to-day operation that we're going to be discussing. And I think that having all six members of the school committee discussing it, along with the people who can give us the best guidance, our administrators, being able to discuss it with everyone all at once, I think is going to be very helpful. So, I would like to see it stay with the full committee, and be, you know, continuing on, have a definite direction on information we're looking for, be able to have that addressed at the meetings, but to continue to have it on our agenda till we get all the answers, because it is a huge change, and we will need a lot of information to make the proper decisions.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Olympia?
Through the chair. Yeah, I agree that we should have a little more time to review the results. But I was wondering if, the next time we do meet, is there a way that we could maybe find out potential costs? Just, you know, the survey said if we change, we delay the start time for the high school 20 to 50 minutes. Is there a way that we can just get a handle on what kind of costs we're talking about in general? Because, you know, I look at the survey, and I look at what we're trying to do here. In a cost-neutral world, I have one opinion, but then I have another opinion on, you know, what kind of costs are we talking about? And if it's significant costs, how are we going to address it come budget time? And what are we going to take away, potentially, if we were to go forward with this? So, I think that's a very big, important piece, to get a handle on what kind of costs we're talking about. And I, just a general, you know, if we moved it a half hour, what that does to the bus schedule.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Olympia. Good points. Mr. Amico?
Great. Thank you. Through the chair of the committee, and on John's point, that was an excellent point. Maybe we can get several different options. He had mentioned the, in moving the high school back a little, but there might be some other ways as well, through the superintendent, if maybe we can look at some other options with cost analysis on those as well. But to John's point, that was an excellent point. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree that cost is going to be a big factor here. And I, to that end, I think the largest significant, or potentially significant, increase in the cost of implementing this is transportation. And I think that's what we're talking about. That's the pink elephant in the room.
Right.
So, to that end, if we want to keep this in regular session, and I'm perfectly fine with that, can we invite the Transportation Director to our next meeting, so that these, the analysis that she goes through and provides, Ms. Mertag, that will be in our agenda, I suspect. We have the opportunity to talk to her about how she came to those results, or, you know, different thoughts and ideas. It's ultimately, I think, the single largest factor in making this decision, in my opinion. I mean, there are other parts to this. Mr. Boo is going to need to be involved with athletics. I think maybe Mr. Buckley, certainly in his staff. But if we're going to keep it in, and that's the benefit of subcommittee. Benefit of subcommittee is we're not meeting the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, but we can have multiple meetings, and get various department heads involved in between our regular school committee meetings. So, if we're going to keep it in the regular school committee, I'd like to start getting those people who are going to be able to provide us with the information here, so that we can talk to them.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Well said. I find this to be a very interesting topic, and I expressed before, I have some reservations, but I would like the opportunity to really learn more. And these survey results are extremely important, and I think further information we can obtain regarding finances will be critical for us. So, I would like to keep this in committee. Why don't we hold it? Motion by Mr. Amico, seconded by Mr. Olympia, to hold this to the next school committee meeting, and start the process of obtaining that additional information, including having the Transportation Director appear at our next meeting, which is November 13th. So, all in favor of that? Thank you very much. Okay, continued business. We have our third item, the Mass General Hospital Institute of Health Professionals. Mr. Hockman?
Actually, I'm going to yield to Ms. Mertag.
Do you have some information from Ms. Mertag?
Yes, I spoke to the representative from Mass General Hospital, and the information that was asked last time. So, what this is, is a, the purpose of the study is to evaluate developmental changes and individual differences on how children learn from feedback. And so what children would do, with parental consent, obviously, is visit the lab in Boston one time, once a year, for three years, either after school, on weekends, or during breaks. Students will complete tests, subtests, and learning games when they visit. Individual results are not intended to be shared with schools, but if the parents would like the students' results, they can get that from them. General results of the study can be shared with the schools, if asked. And results of the study will be published in journals and presented at conferences. And then there will be a follow-up task for the students to do, but it could be, it's done after school on a Chromebook, or a laptop. And that's the information that I received.
Any thoughts or comments on that information? Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Thank you, Ms. Mertag, for getting this information for us. You know, I asked for this at the last meeting, because I had some pluses as far as having PBD Public Schools participate in this program, not necessarily for the study that's going to take place, but I still don't understand what benefit Mass General Hospital gets from this body approving their study that's going to perhaps include some PBD Public School students. I don't know why they need to go through us in order to get these students. Mass General Hospital, I think, runs Children's Hospital, and certainly has enough resources to find potential candidates to participate in this program. So, my no vote on this isn't really a reflection on... So, my no vote on this isn't really a reflection on the study that's gonna take place, or any of the clinicians who are participating in the study. I just don't think that this is an area that we, as a legislative body, really need to enter. So, thank you for getting the information.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Any other further thoughts or comments on this item? Okay. Is there a motion required? If we wanted to take action? I'll leave it up to the board if...
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Arnotice?
Second.
So, the motion will be to disseminate this information to our students?
And just through you, to the superintendent, this is entirely...